All right. All right, the board has returned to open session. So first up on our agenda is a Welcome to Hollywood by school principal Kim Heffner.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to Hollywood Elementary School. It's always wonderful when you join us here and we get to host. I'm excited for the presentation this evening about our student learning in District 96. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, at this time, is there any public comment? Could you come up to the microphone and now state your name?
Hi, my name is Carrie Giacamelli. I have two children currently in Hollywood and I have a child who will be coming up in Hollywood. She's only two. You know, I really appreciated the meeting that we did last, was it last week already? So, I really appreciated that. I was definitely a bit disappointed to see the parking from the Village of Brookfield in the option. Kit Ketchmark was actually at my table and he seemed appalled that it was even an option. So, what I'm really afraid of, and you know, I've been kind of watching this from the beginning, since we started talking about construction and how much it's needed for Hollywood and all the other schools. I've watched you guys fight. I've watched you guys argue. I've watched eyes being rolled at meetings. And I'm just, I know this is stressful. I know there's a lot on your plate and big decisions to be made, but we need to make those decisions. You know, in the last board meeting on the 16th, I wasn't able to attend, but I did watch it, and there were some comments about, you know, this is gonna go, this is gonna impact students for the next 30 to 40 years, maybe more, right? But it's currently impacting students now and it has been impacting students, right? My son's in fifth grade. He's been playing in parking, the parking lot since then, right? And now I'm getting nervous that, granted, my son's in fifth grade, so he's not gonna see this, but my second grader, I'm getting nervous that she's not gonna see a change either. So now I'm like, okay, well, maybe my two-year-old will get to see that. So I really urge you guys to get along, to be good neighbors, and to make the right decision. Whether, I don't know if it's the HEA's property, I don't know what that decision is, but that's why you guys are here and I'm hoping that you make, make some decisions. And not postpone it and put it off, because they have to be made and kids are being impacted today and have been being impacted. So, thank you. I do really appreciate your time, but I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? All right. So are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, and next on the agenda are the committee meetings. First up is the facilities committee.
All right, I'll fill in for Mr. Marvel. First up is to discuss the MOU playground design for Ames and Hollywood School that we first saw at the last meeting. I think we have our architect Steve Wright from DLA here to answer any questions, because I think at the last meeting, it was determined that there were some questions still.
Exactly, right.
So that's why it's on the agenda.
What would the role of the architect firm be? And how would we do this? And do we want to keep the two MOUs? You know, the MOU as one with Ames and Hollywood both on it? Or do we want to consider separate MOUs? So Steve has experience here with playgrounds, wanted to share that, and then also answer questions that the board might have.
So specifically, questions, work? Maybe how?
To start with there, do you want to go over kind of how you've done some playground work at other places?
I'm open to however you want to do this.
Sure. So yeah, first, one of the things, we got a slide up here, so if you could tell us about DLA's experience with playgrounds, that would be great.
Sure. This happens to be a playground that I'm currently doing with Itasca School District, District 10. And this is similar to what I had outlined in the MOU to you. It was talking about having a playground committee. And Itasca had assigned or had asked certain people to be part of the committee to lend their input toward the design. We looked at the types of equipment that would go in, types of surfaces, because underneath equipment, you can have different types of surfaces. You can have rubber, you can have something that looks like synthetic turf, you can have loose rubber, or you can have wood chips. There's sort of a full range. So it was to talk about preferences in materials, in design, and with a playground, I just want you to know that it's not as simple as just opening up a catalog and say, "I want a swing set, I want a slide," because with that, with those types of equipment, we have to talk about areas, it's called, areas that, you know, fall zones, that you could potentially fall. And we need to make sure that those areas do not overlap. So a swing set has to be a certain distance away from a slide, which needs to be a certain distance away from other equipment. You can't really see it on the, on the drawing up here, but there are dotted lines that, that define those fall zones. And at Itasca, they specifically at Benson School, decided they wanted something that was very nature-oriented. So therefore, the colors are very subtle. There are browns, greens, and they wanted to work, they wanted us to work with existing trees that are on their site, to respect those trees. That's why you see kind of a serpentine sidewalk laid out up there. It's so that the kids can experience nature, and then we have a nature theme within the equipment that we picked out. We also incorporated butterfly gardens, so that they can, the kids can actually plant materials to attract butterflies, and so they can be part of the experience too. So there's a lot that goes into this. The committee, again, gives us initial input. We lay out the, the equipment based on the committee's input, bring that back to the committee, get their buy-off, and then take it to the board to say, "Are you comfortable moving forward?" Related to that, again, with the different surfaces, there are requirements that we have to take care of getting drainage out of there. You obviously don't want to have a playground that holds water. So there is drainage underneath, and it depends on what type of material you pick out, whether it's turf or rubber and so on. So we need to take water away so that your playground remains usable all times of the year. So with the rains and so on that we've had right now, with the type of surface that we're putting down right now in Itasca, that drains readily, so that even if you get a heavy rain, you can actually get out and play on this right away. As long as the rain's not falling, you're not gonna be standing in puddles of water. So I have a lot of slides, and I'm not gonna, I, if you're open to it, I will take you through them, or you tell me if you just want me to answer your questions, I will be happy to do it either way.
I agree. Six slides, yeah.
Okay. And I may go quickly. If there's something you want to, want me to go back to, please stop me, okay? So I just want to point out, everything that is in light green is a synthetic turf, so it looks like grass. And again, we, we had talked about we were doing a nature theme, so the blue that you see through there represents a river. So it is a material that is just like synthetic turf, it's only a blue color. So the kids can pretend like they're walking through the water and so on, and interact with, you know, whether it's grass, water, and so on. We, what you saw was a floor plan. They also asked us to do 3D renderings to show how the equipment might look within the setting. So we modeled the building, and then we drew this in 3D to show how the equipment would be laid out. There are different towers in here. There's age-appropriate equipment, whether it's two- to five-year-olds, five-to-12, and so on. But, so we have towers in here, there are, the butterfly garden is on your right. It's an area that, again, can be planted in the spring. In the center is the two-to-five-year-old section, separated by the river, that's the blue area in the middle, from the towers on the other side, which is the five-to-12-year-old age group. There are rocks, as well as logs, that have been picked out to be part of this nature theme. And again, there's a serpentine sidewalk going through here, so the kids can experience the natural trees with, play rocks, I'm saying. There are swing sets you see here, so there's very traditional equipment, there's very non-traditional and very challenging equipment that can be incorporated in here too. The company that we're working with right now actually came out, took down, this is their old playground that was there. They take them down, actually ship them to other parts of the world. The equipment went through a, an organization called Kids Around the World. Our equipment actually made it to the Congo and is being reassembled there. Again, it's, they send them to multiple different communities around the world. With playgrounds, again, there is a lot of heavy work that needs to happen ahead of time to get the drainage taken care of. So you will see heavy equipment, clearing the site, putting in structures to drain the water away. This is just a trench box to show some of this, trenching actually gets down fairly deep. And then this is called under drainage, and this is what goes directly below the turf to drain the water away. This is equipment starting to go up. Posts get dropped in, they get cemented into the ground, and then you slowly start seeing the equipment coming up to start resembling this, different-sized towers. There are slides that come off of them, there's monkey bars, you name it. That serpentine sidewalk that was a very important feature to this school. Fortunately, we have a very good contractor that can lay out this stuff, and these curves are just impeccably done. The concrete people did a great job. We put rings around the trees that we are trying to make sure that we maintain. There are gonna be grates on there so that kids can't mess with the roots. And the turf that comes up around that ring, everything is there to stabilize that tree, make sure it survives and does well. This happens to be a seat wall, so it's a, it's a low wall, poured out of concrete, and it's, it's positioned so that you have views of all the different equipment, so the teachers can watch while they're out there. There's a lot of stone that goes down to drain, that's what's going on here. That happens to be the butterfly garden. The wood piece that you see going across there is where the turf comes in and terminates against the concrete wall. Like I mentioned, there are traditional equipment pieces such as the swings here, and then the, I had mentioned the towers and so on. Two weeks ago tomorrow, we had, this is a 70-ton crane that came out. It came out because these rocks that were being shipped in from California needed this crane to offload them, to place them in the, in the, in the site. This happens to be everything laid out, what I'm standing in front, in front of right here happens to be, it looks like a big sequoia log. And it is quite heavy, 16,000 pounds. So that was the largest feature that was pulled out, laid out, and that is actually is gonna sit in the middle of the water. That's just for scale purposes, just to give you an idea of how big this thing is. It's eight-foot tall. You can go inside of it. It is laid out to be handicap accessible, so you could actually get a wheelchair in there. And that is a feature that we look at, is we do make these playgrounds handicap accessible. This is my favorite part of everything that we're doing, is because these kids came out, they got to witness all of this equipment going up. This was two weeks ago Thursday. They were out there and cheering as the stuff was being put in, and it just, that's, that's why we do this. Also, the guy, the crane operator was placing these things, so these are little rocks that go in between the structures, so kids can go from tower to rock to tower. Again, they, you can be as challenging as you want, you can be as simple as you want. And just, just to break up the, the static shots, we did, just threw a video in here as this is going in. I do want to point out this is just representational, this is the turf, this is what the grass looks like, this is what the river would look like, and as they come together. There's material underneath here that is soft, so that if a kid does fall, they will not get hurt. But there's a variety of different surfaces, and that's why the committee and the board's input is going to be important, because we need to determine, is it a turf-like material that you're looking for, a poured rubber? What are we dealing with? That's your preference. They do all come with a cost, and so that's why we need to look at budget, to be able to design to your budget, and with the material that you're looking for. But I did want to point out that, again, playground sounds simple. You go to a home and you see a swing set, it's, okay, you just put four posts in the ground and you're done. This is a little bit more complicated, and I just want you to know that, and I'm open to whatever questions you've got.
I think just speaking to the complexity is really how, through my own investigation of how different districts do the initial designs, I mean, obviously, then there's selections, like you said, about the surfaces and selection about the actual equipment, that it's my recommendation that we work with DLA, who knows our sites well and knows how we're trying to configure the play sites on our site. So, but wanted the board to obviously have an opportunity to ask.
Sure, absolutely.
Answer, ask questions.
One question I had is, I think, if I recall correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, when we were interviewing architectural firms a couple of years ago, DLA was one of the firms that we decided to go with you guys. I seem to remember at that, at that, during that interview process, it might have been the, your president, Ms. Matlock, someone asked her about playgrounds, and I seem to remember her saying that you guys do not sort of do playgrounds, it's not your forte, and in fact, you work with other companies that actually specialize in that. Is that, I mean, is that correct? Am I misremembering?
There are, there are a lot of companies out there that will do a turnkey installation for you, that you could work with through co-ops, where you could buy the equipment and have them install and take it from beginning to end and deal with them, strictly with them. That's what they do all, all day long. The company that we're doing, that we're working with here does that type of work, but they also do it through the bid process, which is what we're suggesting here. I think you get a, a better deal if we put this out to multiple vendors versus dealing with one vendor. To answer your question though, about playground design, I would say a few years back, we had not done a lot of playgrounds. We have since done many. So I, I wasn't part of the conversation, so I'm not sure exactly what was said, so. But I, we are familiar with everything that goes into putting these in, and the complexity, and as you mentioned, Martha, as far as the coordination between what needs to happen here with the rest of the project, I think that's an important part to at least consider, because the documents that we're putting out right now for each of these buildings, and where you're considering doing a playground, it, there is some coordination that needs to happen. And if you had another outside group doing this, I don't know if the coordination will be seamless, as having us do so, but it's completely up to you.
The other thing I just want to add is, we are subject to a competitive bidding requirement as, as an entity, that we do know that playgrounds will cost us more than $25,000. So we have to have a design on which somebody would bid. So, you know, you work with, at a playground equipment company to deliver the structures, and they are making, creating, distributing the structures. It's, it's the design idea, it's that first-step idea in terms of where we are now.
It's the layout. It's getting those initial steps going, getting the layout, and we can lay out, again, I don't care what company does the installation. If you're looking for a swing set, if you're looking for a couple of slides, if you're looking for towers, we can represent that, picking that type of equipment out, and have multiple vendors look at it, bid it competitively, like you're talking about, and then that way you get the benefit of the lowest bidder.
So I think, I understand what you're saying, I think both of you are saying about the design and the bidding, and of course, we have to bid out these, the construction regardless, right? But I guess what, what ideally I would have, I think, what I would have liked to have or see, have seen or see, I don't know if there's time now, but is to see several different design firms and say, "Hey, here are some things we've done," not just your firm, it sounds like you've gotten into this recently, but other firms that, that work on design and say, "Hey, this is what we've done," and then we could have sort of selected from several different firms that sort of specialize in, in design, not just the construction. So that's kind of what my sort of hesitation is, I guess.
I think I'm on the same plane as, as Dr. Miller. What percentage of your projects would you say are playgrounds?
I don't know that I can put a number to it, because we do, I would say probably 96% of our work is schoolwork, but not every school wants to put in a playground when the building's going up.
Right. When you say to do many, how many is many?
I would say
It's hard for us to know.
Within the last 10 years, we've probably done 15 or 20.
Jeff, I guess I have to go back to your point, because I understand what you're saying, and it's really where, where my head sort of started. But you don't invite in these companies until you have a design on which they are then telling you how they would build onto your sites, your site dimensions and all that. So that's really where I got stuck, you, calling Game Time, calling New Toys, calling these companies that do playgrounds, you can't get a comparable bid until you're giving them some sort of conceptual design.
I understand the distinction between building and design.
I think, I think it's a design I'm interested in. The equipment is here nor there. That, that happens at a separate time, but I think seeing different designs would be, I think, valuable, especially with companies that specialize in playground design, and that's their, their bread and butter.
I guess, I understand what Jeff's saying, what you're saying, sure. I guess my thing is, for us to go out and bid, to start this process, and go bid for an architect to come in, and then to design this based on what we're already doing, I do think that we need to just sit for continuity's sake. In, in projects like this, it's just better to have the continued continuity that we have with this project right now. I'm okay with, with going forward with this, with this MOU. I'm concerned that Hollywood, given that there's still a lot of uncertainty with what we're doing with parking, with the lease agreement, I mean, we've got to work out all those details, that we might not be able to do that this year. But I, I do, I don't think we should be looking for a new architect right now to do the design work on something, just so that we can keep moving forward with this, because we're gonna be, we're gonna be slowing down the whole process.
I certainly don't want to delay things either. It's just when we initially started this process, we had all, we'd always talked about finding firms to do the design for playgrounds, because DLA had said this is not our thing. So just remember what it's like for us, so.
You have to have a definition of the scope.
I understand that.
But that's really where I, in my research, am at.
I understand that.
To get to the point of definition of scope, site dimensions, site needs, water drainage, et cetera, you need not a playground company, but you need
No, I'm not asking for a company. I'm asking for a design.
Yeah, you and I are just misunderstanding each other, but okay.
I don't, I don't want a company to just pick out of a catalog. I actually agree with Mr. Wright that picking out of a catalog is, you know, a little, a little too simple for what we would hope for our children, so I think we're on the same page there, yeah.
I do think a catalog is useful to say, "I like that type."
Oh, of course, of course.
At least it's a starting point.
Right.
So, I'll just, David, what you said, I 100% believe we should move forward with this MOU. I'm very comfortable with the work DLA has done and moving forward. You know our sites, you know the projects. I, I just wanted to voice my support of the MOU.
Wes, is there anything you'd like to add?
Hmm, no. I'm not sure I'm well-enough versed in the conversation in its current form to, I'm not sure what some of this prior conversation was, I'm not sure I'm exactly following the differences of opinion here, because it, I guess the way I'm understanding it is, we've got to lay everything out, and then we're still gonna bid it to a playground company. So I guess I'm not sure where the different sides are coming from at this point, so.
Another reason why I'm comfortable with this is because, while they're gonna, they might be doing the design, they might be drawing the lines and the char, like where the swing set's gonna go, where the slide's gonna go, there is gonna be a committee here that's gonna be providing input and guidance on that, and so I'm comfortable moving forward with this. I just, I just think going out for bid is just gonna slow this down more than we really can afford it.
Well, we'll have to go out for bid at some point, meaning the design, I think is what you're talking about.
Right, I'm talking to the design, I'm not talking, I'm talking for an architect to come back, to go out for bid for a design for an architect. I'm talking to an architect, not, not the playground equipment itself.
Yeah, I, I think I remember that conversation you were referring to, Jeff, that, because yeah, so that was the expectation at some point, we would be talking with a playground design firm, but that said, it sounds like that the DLA has some experience on that, and I, I do like what was shown here tonight, that it's, it is inventive, it's not, you know, it's just, as you were saying, you know, four posts and a, and a swing set, there are definitely some thought and some, some nice things that you may not see at just every playground, or definitely looks like there's some time and attention and trying to bring some original thinking to that, so I definitely appreciate that. And also, again, where we're at on the calendar, and given that, you know, some of the projects, be it Ames, be it Blythe, or some of these other, not Blythe, that doesn't have a parking or a playground component, but be it Ames or other places, that the calendar is coming, approaching fast, and it would be tough at this point to bring a different design firm in, knowing that we will have a bid for equipment at some point in the future.
I have a question about materials, if you were showing the Do you ever work with non-rubber materials? I mean, now you mentioned the mulch, what else would you suggest?
You want to touch?
Have you done, I'm just curious, have you done any playgrounds that don't use like the turf or?
Well, and again, this, there really are four, four that can be used.
Right, the mulch.
And I'll say wood
Or the chips, yeah.
I'll say wood fiber, which is just mulch.
Right.
That is the cheapest. It is also probably the hardest to maintain.
Yeah, we have that in Riverside, yeah.
And you have to keep refreshing it every year to keep it an appropriate depth. it's loose rubber, and I, I'll pass this around. It's just chunks of rubber. It's just like wood mulch, but it's rubber material. The next is, this is called, this is a poured rubber surface. So it stays in one continuous sheet, I'll call it. The poured rubber is approximately four inches thick. It's made so, again, it's, it's spongy, so that if a kid falls, they don't get hurt. The turf that I'm passing around also has recycled material underneath it that has a give, so that if somebody falls, they don't get hurt. That is the purpose in any material you put on the equipment, is so that the kids do not get hurt. But with the mulch, you have to go with 12 inches of material. And over time, even over one year, if you go, if you look at underneath a swing set where the kids will put their feet down, it gets burrowed out, and it has to be replenished. And again, over one-year or two-year time, you will probably lose about three inches of mulch, just because it'll be degrading, and you need to replenish every year.
Yeah, the trucks always come in, yeah.
Yes.
I see that a lot.
And if you get a heavy rain, it floats up and starts washing away. So that's the only reason that some of these other materials are being used today, to keep it in place.
Is there chrome rubber in the turf?
There is, yes.
Do you have concerns about the health, safety of chrome rubber for children?
I do not.
Really?
We've done a lot of research, a lot of the companies that are doing that right now, it's, it's actually frozen, it's cryogenically chopped up. now, it's actually frozen, cryogenically chopped up, and between the chrome rubber and the sand that goes in, I have not, I have heard what you're, you know, concerns from some people.
Yeah, it's just a question I have, yeah.
But, no, I have not a concern at all about that.
Just to follow up, what's your explanation of the services? I understand that underneath the playground equipment, you need to have something softer, one of these materials, because if a kid falls, you don't want them to hurt themselves. And I also understand that like on a, if you want a court, like a basketball court or something like that, it has to be harder so the kids can play basketball or whatever. But do you guys ever design areas that are completely naturalistic, where you have actually, you know, real grass?
Real grass?
Real trees and real, like, for example, I'm thinking of Blythe Park, and I don't know, like, they've got large areas, some of it's the school, some of it's the village, where I think it's completely, there's no synthetic turf there, right? Is that correct, or is that, is that like, you know, the kids also play on the grass, they run around the grass too, right, don't they, and there are different areas around that playground?
There are grassy areas, and then there's wood chip playground.
Yeah, and on the area where there's wood chip, the village playground, is that like a problem, like, is that, how frequently is it a problem that they can't run on the grass because it's too wet, and is that, is that like a-
Is it too wet?
Yes.
Um, it happens, I mean, we have like rain that night, and it's out for, or, you know, pools, like if it snowed outside, it could still come, it's just, yeah, they're not actually allowed on the grass or in areas, because then it'll start to fall out of the woods.
Soak it wet, yeah.
So we do put some restrictions on it, because it does get wet.
Right.
And what, you know, it's just not necessarily a safe area.
Sure, right, right. I guess my feeling is that, I understand the need for some of this, but if it's going to be, if we're talking about designing entire playgrounds with just plastic, it's not sort of what I have, my vision of what's ideal, you know.
No, I understand. That's why, in the playground represented here, the lighter green I said was the turf, the darker green is actually natural grass.
That's natural, okay.
Which one's lighter and darker? I know-
Yeah, what do you mean?
So, upper right.
Okay, thank you.
Upper right. I'm calling lighter, it's the turf.
Okay, or neon is turf.
Correct. And the stuff closer to the school is actually natural.
Yeah, that's the question.
Yeah, see, and that's, I mean, that's something that I think would be very ideal in our situation, a mix of both.
Yeah, I understand the need for some, but if it was an entire plastic playground, it seems a little silly.
I agree, but that's why we can integrate. You don't want them, you know, you don't want an island of grass in the middle of turf because of transition.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's why we use the sidewalk here to separate the two. So you have both experiences.
I mean, and I guess we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. I think we need to just decide on whether or not we're going to move forward with this MOU.
So we're not holding on the MOU.
Right, 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 right.
The MOU has some date problems on it, spread the timeline, yeah.
Originally, yes, it was originally dated beginning of October, and if we're now the middle of November, obviously, yes, there's some dates that have changed, yes. So I guess another aspect of this that had come up at the last meeting was wondering whether Ames and Hollywood, if it made sense to have them in the same MOU, or if it would make sense to separate them. And I'm open to doing either. If we do them together, there can be some combined meetings that basically cover, you know, some expectations that the district may have for the committee. I'm assuming there would be possibly two committees, one for Ames, one for Hollywood.
You've got to have each community give feedback.
Right, right.
Can I ask?
I'm sorry.
I just had a question, so those, this MOU, just sort of, because there's a lot of uncertainty right now with Hollywood. When you start talking playground, what are you, when you start planning this out, what do you go and say, here's like, we're putting it here, and what are we going to do, or you start talking about concepts, saying, what do you want, and then start, where are you going to go?
I would start with determining a size, an approximate size, doesn't have to be exact, but approximately, an approximate location, which I know plays into the Hollywood conversation. I made some assumptions right now of where it might go, about how big it would be, just to see if it would work, and I've run through just some scenarios, and I think it's very easily done in Hollywood, it just, we have to determine the exact location.
But I guess my question is, what if that location, not to say that you did anything wrong, but what if say that location you picked, could it be picked up then and moved to another?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I just looked at approximate size, and to see what might work with some of the equipment, and again, I'm guessing of the equipment that might be chosen. I needed to start somewhere.
Right, right.
That's all. So I am not going to pull something out of the drawer and say, I think this is what we need to do, because the input of the committee is what's going to be the design.
Are there any other questions about the MOU? Are we at a point where we feel, is there, so it seems to me, I'm going to play Joel, try to moderate it here, it seems to me maybe the main question about the MOU is should it be separated, one for Hollywood, one for Ames? Is that, is that a fair question?
And again, we can definitely do that. What I was trying to do is, again, so we're not doubling up on meetings.
I mean, are we, that's what I'm saying, is the board okay with this, with an MOU structured this way, obviously dates would have to change-
Sure.
-and be updated to reflect that, but I just want to have clear consensus, so at the next meeting, we can, you know, take action.
Move it as an action.
Yeah.
Right, and that's, I personally think we should separate them, because we don't know. Obviously, if we can, if we run them parallel together, and at what point in time, if we can't run them in parallel together, then we would have those duplicate meetings. But if that's how I'd sort of like to see, that we have two, that we still run them parallel, but because there's uncertainty right now, I don't want to sort of go down too far down the path where then we're saying, okay, this is the location, and then we start doing surveys, doing, going down the path where we, where it's very site-specific, that we can't change it. So if I'm okay with we can do that, if that's something that's open, but I, because I agree, I'd like to run them parallel, but I don't want to be stuck.
Would we be incurring any additional cost if we did that, or is it cost neutral? No, if there, if we do separate them, I would anticipate, because, again, more meeting time, there would be some rise in cost, I don't know how significant it would be, I've got to look at the hours that are-
Just for the architect's time and travel and all that, yeah.
Correct.
I like them together. I think to do the same thing, I'm not sure, I think it's worth, I think our architects are very aware of the situations and the projects going on, that we would be adjusting based on needs for any site. So I'm comfortable with this current MOU, but I want to hear what you guys say, so that we can make sure we move this forward. Or not.
I mean, they seem like they're sort of, they're sort of distinct projects, I don't see any synergy between designing a playground at Ames and designing a playground in Hollywood, they're very specific to their own location, to their own communities' desires, so they seem like they're, to me, I don't see much synergy, so I don't see on the cost side, I don't see-
I think, for me, the way, where I see it, and I could be completely wrong, is that, as the committee is meeting, and there's, you know, players from all different areas, I would think, I don't think we're going to be designing two completely different playgrounds at two different schools. I would assume that we kind of set up district ideas and district, you know, like, yeah, everything's going to be site-specific, and they're not all going to be carbon copies of each other, but I do think like, you know, it's not, I don't foresee one school being 100% synthetic turf and the other being all wood chip, you know, like, I kind of feel like those decisions are going to be made at a district level, so that's where the synergy for me comes, but.
I don't know, I kind of want to hear what the Hollywood families want for their specific place in Ames, because they might play differently, depending on the population, maybe I'm wrong, I don't know how the families feel, but maybe they want the same, but I kind of wanted to hear what the committees would have to say about, they might use it differently, I don't know, depending on the size.
I guess my point was, was not to disagree, your point was more that it seemed like they could run in parallel with very little, at least initially, you know.
That's, I'm fine with either, I'm completely fine with either.
I certainly don't want to leave Hollywood behind. I want to see why they can't run in parallel, why they have to be in the same MOU if they have site issues, but.
We have to choose.
I do like Linda's point about some things being decided on a district level, and again, going back to particularly if there's cost savings associated with that, that makes sense, not that they would be carbon copies of each other, just obviously the land size is different, the shapes are different.
Yeah.
There are some things that could be decided at a district level, though.
Right, no, I think that's right, I think Linda's right about that, you're correct about that, I think it's more, more the question is, you have two MOUs, but you do exactly what you do otherwise, you say you have the meetings together, you make the district decisions, except that, as David was pointing out, if for some reason, you know, there's still some open questions about, you know, parking and all the rest here that we have at Hollywood, if for some reason-
Can't we just add that into this MOU then? Is that a possibility?
What I'm saying is that if there's something, you know, there's still, this might be is out there, but if for some reason we can't end up doing, or we have to make a change in what we're doing in Hollywood, we want to have the flexibility to say, hey, we need to sort of change direction, or we need to stop this until it gets clarity, or whatever, and that, I think we need that, don't we?
Yeah, no, but could we get that flexibility within one MOU, is what I'm asking, like, you know what I mean, like, could we achieve our goals while doing the cost effective?
I don't know, I'd have to see what they come up with.
Wouldn't it be exactly the same thing, one just says Ames and one says Hollywood?
I would think so.
I mean, this is vague enough, where it's just, we're going to have meetings.
Yeah, it's vague, we'll have meetings.
But I think, if you had two MOUs, you'd be having two sets of meetings.
I mean, you could still have them, I guess, I don't, it seems moot to me, is whether or not, one or two, because what we actually execute on is kind of irrelevant to what's in this document.
I 100% agree.
I'll use the example of the work that we have started doing at Central Hauser with the Lakota Group landscape architects and the traffic engineers. In one day's time, we brought in parents, students, staff, Central and Hauser, we got it all done in one day, because some of the committee is really more, like, what I would call most more focused group input, you want to hear from parents and kids and staff, what they, what their thoughts, what their desires, interests would be around equipment, and the kind of play they want to do, and where they want to sit, and where they want to stand, and we got great feedback, and in a really pretty efficient time period. So I think would we be-
That would be my goal, to make this as efficient, to your point, make it as efficient as possible, so we can get decisions made, and we can move forward. So it's, again, I'm open to however you want to structure.
Realizing that implementation may go on a different schedule.
Yeah, they'll have to have separate project schedules, you know, depending on where we figure out to put cars.
And in the MOU, it says the schedule can be adjusted as needed. Yeah, it's in there, so we still, we have that flexibility.
Yes, yes.
So, I just, I just want to make sure we're at a consensus, so when we bring this board meeting for action, we can actually, you know, take action. So, I don't know if we're there, are we there, I hope we're there.
I don't feel strongly about this, it's not, this is a particularly important point here.
Yeah, I mean-
You're fine with this, the MOU with the adjusted time schedule?
I mean, the way I'm reading this is, page one is what is relevant, page two is that it's going to be Ames and Hollywood, and then the project schedule, which clearly needs to be adjusted, and continue to be adjusted, and then the compensation component isn't going to change, that's, there's no definitive numbers in here, that's going to be dependent on how much time we take, and then there's the rates.
Yeah, the time, right.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my reason for separating them is because I don't want Ames to fall behind because of this, and that's, so if we get to a point that we can't move forward, we need to-
But I don't think that would be a situation, I don't-
That's my concern.
I don't think the MOU is going to hold us to that, I think it's more so the time in the site.
Right, the overall project plan.
What about the time and materials, do you think we can keep to a number there for a joint MOU? Because we have a set number, do you want to have, you know, we're going to have to separate everything then and just make it really concrete, so we can tell, you know, what decisions need to happen? I don't mind it as long as it's very discreet, one.
I mean, I'll just, you know, I'm okay with it, as long as we know that this won't hold up Ames.
There's nothing in here that says one thing is dependent on the other.
Right, yeah, I know, I know that, I just, I don't understand to make sure the process is right.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because we certainly don't, you know, we want to move forward on all of our projects, so, again, I'm comfortable with this MOU with an adjusted time frame.
Yeah, as long as, as long as like presentations are adjusted.
I feel more comfortable that you've explained it to us.
And just to put it in perspective, we're looking at completing drawings, go out for all of the additions, all of the remodeling, basically in two to three weeks. So my only concern right now is making the decisions that are pertinent to the civil engineering part, being the drainage and so on, so that we can pick an area, set a size, so I can get the appropriate drainage design, get that out to bid right now, we can follow up with the actual playground equipment going out as a separate package. So we have a little time to work out the actual piece of it, but the other stuff needs, a decision needs to be made very quickly.
So let me ask this, so, based on this timeline, I'm looking at the timeline that you had in here, that we were going to have preliminary sketches, assuming we started last month, like within a month, so is that, when you're saying spit location, does that mean that that, because with drainage, I'm assuming that this contingent on where we're placing it?
It would be site-specific.
And so I guess my question is, we're talking drawings a month out from whenever we sign this MOU, preliminary drawings, and then having everything wrapped up possibly a month or two later, like that, and I guess my question is, are we going to have, I just, I'm just concerned that we might not have all the specific location of where we're going to put the playground at Hollywood.
My understanding on that, that aspect wouldn't matter, that we would still move forward with Ames, am I correct in that assumption?
We could definitely do that, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I might, I just want to clarify one thing about, you've already been working with the village about setbacks for playground issues as well, and what types of surfaces need to be towards the street and those types of things, doesn't the village have a very specific opinion on that?
At which site? At Ames?
At Ames, yeah.
Yes, they have made suggestions of where they want hard surfaces.
So you already know that part?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, so I'm going to keep this moving, so Martha, do you feel like you have a clear direction?
So I'm going to be putting it as an action item at our regular November board meeting.
This MOU with an adjusted times?
Right, it'll be a modified MOU from state.
So the 11:20 meeting, two weeks from now?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, all right, so any other questions, or can we move forward? Moving forward, okay. Next item was just, we just wanted to briefly do a follow-up from this special meeting regarding Hollywood School, and I think our follow-up is just basically, we completely appreciated everybody, I think we had 50 community members come out, and everything we heard at the separate tables and the group discussion was so helpful and so informative, and as a board, I know, speaking for the board, I know, we're really appreciative of that, so we're taking that, and hopefully be moving forward, so just wanted to say a sincere thank you, and Hollywood community is always really engaged, and we really appreciate it.
We even had some staff members, I would think, that's very generous for their time as well, just to give feedback on how they use the space, and so, it's nice to see.
Yep, all right, on that, I'll move the meeting to Sheri for Education Committee.
Yeah, this one, thank you for limiting my time. We're going to hear from Ms. Angela Dolso for our student achievement, we have some data to look at that we just received a little while ago, so she's going to show us her presentation. Something we do every fall, so you know it's coming, yeah.
All right, and I'll try to shave 19 minutes off.
I was just joking.
I'm just kidding also, no, I did not take it that way.
You can just cut into the next one.
Yeah, we'll take it from finance.
Cut out three minutes.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Ryan Toy, good evening, community members and colleagues. I'm excited to be here tonight to share with you a snapshot of student achievement in District 96. One of the things I'm going to point out is that as we look at student achievement in our school district, we want to look at all different types of assessments, because they're all a piece of the bigger puzzle, and we don't want to focus on one piece of assessment, because as you'll see, there's often a trend among the different pieces of assessment that help guide us in our direction as a district, as leaders, as staff members, as we're working to help our students continue to grow and achieve. We're going to be looking at data from the 2018-19 school year, from last school year, so to start that, I just wanted to take a look at the demographic profile from last school year. You can see that last year we had enrollment of about 1,700 students, and of those 1,700 students, 22% were low-income students, which was up a little bit from last year, where we were at about 15%. We have 16%, we had 16% students with IUPs, 1% homeless, and then our English learners were at 5%, which is about where we trend with our English learners. Last year we were at 6%, but previous years it was 5%, so we're always around that area. Our student attendance was around 94%, and our student mobility was 3%, and then our chronic absenteeism is actually important now, and you can see there it was at 9%. It's important because you'll see later on that it plays a role in our school report[1786.47] card designation, and so the state is looking at how many students in a school district are missing 10% or more of a total school year, or the total number of days that they're enrolled in school, and they're looking at that and attributing index points to the schools, to each school, to help determine their school designation, and so you can see here, we're at 9% chronic absenteeism for last school year, which equates to 154 of our students. So let's start with multi-tiered systems of supports, MTSS, and the MTSS program, just to review, is a system that we have in our school district, where we're supporting our students both with enrichment, as well as with interventions and supports. So when you look at this diamond, the left-hand side of the diamond is looking at our students who need more support in the academic areas of language arts, or in mathematics, tier three being our students who need intensive support, and so they might, that might look like one-on-one, or a group of one staff member to two students, a smaller group type thing, or more minutes per week. Tier two looks at a small targeted group, a small group of students who are working on a targeted skill, whether in mathematics or English Language Arts, and it's also less frequently than your tier three level. When you look to the right-hand side of the diamond, that is for our students who need more enrichment, and so again, that tier two is looking at that enrichment in a smaller group setting, and a tier three would be students who need more intensive support for continued acceleration, achievement growth. When we are looking at what level of support our students need, whether it is tier three, tier two, or tier one, which is our whole class instruction, students' needs are being met in the classroom, might have some support from a teacher to achieve that success, but it's all classroom-based, so when we're looking to see what level of support our students need, whether it's tier three, tier two, tier one, on either side of the diamond, we start with looking at data in the fall, winter, and spring off of Fastbridge at, across all the elementary grades, NWEA MAP for second through eighth grade, and Fanta's and Pennell for our primary students. And from there, we also then talk, we have conversations about the students, and what's happening in the classroom with classroom assessments and classroom work that they're doing, and we talk about what level of support's going to best meet individual students' needs. So for last school year, to monitor, every school year, to monitor MTSS supports, we want to look at how many students are in tier two or tier three, and we often look at it at the level of how many students are needing supports at tier two and tier three, and we want to see what kind of movement is happening, because MTSS is a fluid process. A student who's in tier three at one point, is not going to necessarily always be in tier three, in fact, we don't want them to be, we want the support we're providing to show growth, that they're moving to tier two, and eventually tier one as well. So we are monitoring at our benchmarks of fall, winter, and spring, how our students are doing over the course of time. Our principals work with their teachers, their staff members, to also monitor in between those benchmarks, and so every six weeks, they're having discussions with their school-based teams to talk about how students are progressing with the supports they currently have. But I track the numbers based off of our benchmark sessions, and so you can see here for ELA, we had 152 students who entered, and this is for K8, we had 152 students who entered in ELA in the fall, and between fall and winter, 30 of those students moved from either tier three or tier two to tier one, so they no longer needed that support. Within, between that time, between fall and winter, we had 10 students who moved from tier three to tier two, so we decreased the amount of support they needed, and when winter was all said and done, from all the movement we had, and people moving in, students moving in to supports, we had 158 students. From winter to spring, we had 41 students who no longer needed support, so they moved to tier one, 10 students who moved from tier three to tier two, and by the end of the 18-19 school year, we had 117 students who would continue to need supports at the tier two or tier three level, which means that we were able to exit 23% of our students from the MTSS tier two, tier three systems, which compared to last year is slightly down the year before, the year before, 37% of our students had exited the MTSS process in ELA. It's not necessarily a good or a bad thing, but it is something for us to continuously watch, because it tells us if our interventions are working for our students, or if we need to look at how we're supporting our students, and what we need to do to increase the number of students we're able to exit. You can see the same numbers for math, 163 students entered in the fall, 47 were able to exit, 14 moved from tier three to tier two. When all was said and done, students entering at winter, students moving around, we had 137 students when we started winter-spring part, in spring we exited 28 students, 10 moved from tier three to tier two, and we ended with 93 students still needing tier two or three support. In math, we exited 43% of our students, compared to the previous year of 48%. NWA MAP is another piece of our assessment picture. So for those who are or aren't familiar with NWA MAP, there are a couple of different ways that you can look at the data from MAP. We have attainment, which looks at how students' average scores compared to average scores of students in other schools, and it's other schools across the nation. For high achieving districts, you're looking to be in the 75th percentile for attainment. We also look at growth, and growth looks at how students are making growth from one testing period to another, whether it's from fall to winter, winter to spring, or from fall to spring in a school year, or sometimes we look at data from spring of one year to spring of another year. With a high achieving district, you're going to want, NWA, NWEA MAP says that you want 50 to 60% of your students to meet their growth targets. It's important to note that the higher RIT score a student has, the lower their growth target is going to be, so you're not looking for high levels of growth the higher you get up in RIT scores. So let's start by talking about our attainment in reading, and we're going to look at this a couple of different ways. We're going to start by looking at it from spring of 2018 to spring of 2019, and so what you see here is, in spring of 2019, students were in a particular grade, and if you look at the first one, first to second grade, spring of 2019, we had second graders who scored an average RIT score of 194 and 9 tenths, that's in the 82nd percentile. Because first graders don't take a test, you don't see a score for that group of students, that cohort of students, for spring of 2018, but when you look down to second to third grade, the third graders in 2019 had an average RIT score of 209 and 5 tenths, which was the 95th percentile. The year before, when they were in second grade, they had an average RIT score of 197 and 3 tenths, which was the 92nd percentile. So what's important about this is, you can see that this group of students, from the spring of 2018, when they were second graders, to a year later, after a year of instruction, they had the summer off, they have a year of instruction, different teacher, a year later, they made three percentile growth points, so they went from the 92nd percentile to the 95th percentile. And you can see that we also increased at the seventh grade level for 2019, and the eighth grade level for 2019. We did drop a little bit in fourth grade and fifth grade, and in sixth grade, we maintained, and that's actually a success, because we have two platforms that we test off with NWA MAP. There is a platform for second to fifth graders, and there's a platform for sixth and up, and when students change platforms, the test reads differently, and the test has different norms. So often, NWA MAP has said, and we have seen in the past, that there is sometimes a dip in scores between fifth and sixth grade, and so that fifth to sixth grade line are fifth graders in 2018 taking a test on one platform, and then in 2019, being sixth graders taking it on another platform, and even with the platform switch, they were able to maintain that 93rd percentile. So that, while maintaining the percentile may not look like growth, that actually is a success. This is still looking at spring to spring, so you can see here, this is looking at the growth of that cohort of students at each grade level, and what this shows you is that the diamond tells you what it should have happened for that grade level, as far as RIT point growths. So for third graders, you would expect third graders to grow, that group of third graders to grow 10 RIT points from spring of 2018, when they were second graders, to spring of 2019, when they were third graders. The diamond represents the projected growth, the bar graph represents how they did, and so you can see that we exceeded our growth targets in third, seventh, and eighth grade, and sixth grade, and then we were slightly under in fourth and fifth grade, and you do have a chart at your table that shows you the, no, not the numbers for this one, I'll show you the numbers for the next one. Sorry about that. So this is spring to spring. When you look, though, fall to spring, it tells just a slightly different story, and it also accounts for that platform change. So now when you're looking fall to spring, and that's what these two graphs show you, the sixth grade test is now the same platform, because it's a test the sixth graders took in the fall, had a year of instruction, and then took the sixth grade test in the spring as well, and that's what these two graphs represent, is fall, and then a year of instruction, and taking the test at the end of the year in spring. The diamond, again, represents the projected growth for our students, and then the bar graph represents where our students actually were at. So you can see at the top, it's the previous year, fall of 2017 to 2018, you can see where we were at, we exceeded growth in third grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, and then we were slightly under in second, fourth, fifth, and sixth. Moving forward a year, you can see that those grade levels are now mostly exceeding their projected growth targets, where fifth grade is just about right at it, and sixth grade is slightly above it. We have the same types of charts for math, so this again is looking at attainment, and looking at how are we doing from spring of 2018, with a cohort of students who have a year of instruction, and then take the test in spring of 2019, that is the next grade level. Our third graders in 2019 maintained their percentile, as did our fourth graders, our fifth graders increased, our sixth graders did decrease in math, and then our seventh and eighth graders also increased. We have the spring to spring growth for math, and you can see here, remembering the platform change for our sixth graders, you can see our sixth graders are slightly under, not slightly, our sixth graders are under the projected growth. While there is a platform change, one of the things, one of the next steps for me, as the Director of Teaching and Learning, and for the leadership team as we work together, is to dig into that math data for sixth grade, and as we continue to talk, you'll see that there is a slight trend, and one of the things we want to look at is, how are we aligning our instruction between fifth and sixth grade? What possibly might be missing in conversations with sixth grade teachers on Institute Day that just passed in October, there was conversation starting already on what are some things that they're noticing our fifth graders need prior to coming to middle school, so that is going to be a continued conversation that we're having as a leadership team, as well as with the teachers. Here is our growth compared fall to spring, you see fall of the 17-18 year for mathematics, compared to fall of the 18-19 year, where we are exceeding growth in all grade levels in the 18-19 year, except for in sixth grade. So let's talk about state assessments, the next part of this puzzle. The state assessment that we utilize is the Illinois Assessment for Readiness, the IAR, formerly known as PARC. It's important to note that while the name changed, the system still assesses the same content, the changes that pretty much happened were platform changes and length of the test. So they allow, they maintain, the state maintained the same content to be assessed, so that we were able to compare growth and progress across years, and it wouldn't adjust that or change that. So IAR assesses ELA in math, brings, it gives students performance level from one to five of did not meet expectations up to exceeding expectations. When students come home, or when students get their scores, they get a scaled score for ELA and a scaled score for math, and those scaled scores are matched up to those expectation levels, they pretty much match up first through third, fourth and fifth, there's some fluctuations between what meets and what exceeds at each grade level. When the IAR data is reported on the school report card, it's reported for all students, and it's also reported for subgroups, and when it's figured out for our school designations, subgroups are also looked at for our school designation. So we want to make sure as a district that we are monitoring our subgroups, to see how our subgroups are doing, as well as all of our students, because that plays a role in our designations, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Subgroups are defined as groups that have at least 20 students, grades three through five, that have a score, so if we have 20 students in a group, they have a score. The groups that we report for 2019 are our white students, our Hispanic students, our low-income students, and our students with IEPs. I start here with a combined look of ELA and math. Sometimes you'll have students who are really strong in one subject area or another, and so you'll see average scores, or you'll see percentiles that lean one way or another for one subject or the other, so it's often nice to look at a combined, combined score, to see how are we achieving overall as a district. You can see here, over the course of four years, we have made growth, we did slightly, like, what is it, 6 tenths of a point, decrease between last year and this year, which, with a standard deviation, means that we're about the same. When you separate it out, you can see for English Language Arts, at the top, we had 73% of our students meet or exceed expectations on the IAR, and then in mathematics, we had 59% of our students meet or exceed expectations on the IAR, and the state comparison is there as well. We do know that we're a high-performing district, and we do perform incredibly higher than the state, but it's always good to be aware of where we're falling in comparison with the state. And so then this is our district data for English Language Arts, broken up by those levels. You can see that we, in, over the course of four years, we've increased the number of, percentage of students who are exceeding expectations and meeting expectations, we've decreased the number of students who are approaching, and who are partially meeting, as well as not meeting expectations. Again, we had a 73%, 73% of our students met or exceeded our expectations, and our average scale score across third through eighth grade was 766 and 9 tenths, which falls in that met expectations range. The state comparison is the far right-hand column. As I said earlier, we want to watch our subgroups, we want to see how our subgroups are doing and how they're growing. We have the orange line are our white students, and you can see that they're performing at the top, the blue line being all of our students combined. Then we have our Hispanic students, our low-income students, and our students with IEPs. What's important to note here is that all of our students are growing, all of our subgroups are growing, and that is very important to acknowledge. What we want to do as a leadership team, as a school district, is we want to accelerate the growth of the subgroups who are not meeting at the same level as the highest subgroup that we have. So we're going to continue to work as a leadership team on exploring what do, what can we do to help accelerate that growth. Looking at math, you can see that we have increased the percentage of students who are exceeding expectations in math, we have slightly decreased in met expectations, and stayed the same in approached and did not meet, and increased slightly in partially met expectations. And what that overall ends up to come out to is that we did decrease 59% from last year to this year on our math meet and exceeds expectations, we had 59% of our students meet or exceed in 2019. Over the course of the four years, though, we have, we are still higher than we were when we started IAR in 2016, or IAR slash PARC in 2016. Average scaled score was 757, which again is in the met expectations range, and then the state comparisons are to the right. Our subgroup data for math, as matches our, matches the data that you just saw, you can see that the subgroups have slightly dipped in all areas, except for our students with IEPs from last year to this year, or to 2019, there was a slight increase with our student, with students with IEPs, and so as we're continuing to explore what happened in math, we will continue to explore how to accelerate growth in math also for our subgroups, but also looking at all of our students. The Illinois Science Assessment is another state assessment that's given, the state reports the scores for Illinois Science Assessment as proficient or not proficient, and so you can see here, over the course of three years, where we are at with grade five, and where we're at, where we are at with grade eight. The state comparison is the far right-hand bar, the yellow bar, we have increased over the course of three years for both grade levels, we did drop three points for eighth grade. The thing about the science assessment, IAR is great with English Language Arts and math, in that we get a lot of detailed reports about what's, how students did, and what they're assessed on, what standards, what's looked at by grade level. assessed on, what standards, what's looked at by grade level. It's great for us to dig into. With the Illinois Science Assessment, they give us less information, it's more vague, and so we will continue to work on the standards we're teaching in science, but we don't get the level of depth of information from the state when it comes to the science assessment So climate and culture also plays a role in our school designation, our school report cards. And what the state uses to measure climate and culture is the Five Essential Survey that parents, students, and staff members take. Students in grades fourth through eighth take the Five Essential Survey in class. Teachers and parents take the Five Essential Survey on their, on their time. And this year, this past year was the first year that fourth and fifth graders took the survey. Prior to that, it was just the middle school students who took it. You'll see in a second that there was a time when the state said you could take the Five Essentials every other year or a climate survey every other year, but now because it's part of the school report card, we have to take it every year. So you'll see in a minute that we do have a year where we don't have data because we didn't take it that year. Overall, District 96, the schools in Riverside District 96 were all well-organized for improvement. You can see how that ranks out. There at the bottom, the summary score levels for improvement go from not yet organized to well-organized. That score comes from those five essentials you see on the left-hand side, where it says effective leaders, collaborative teachers, supportive environment, involved families, and ambitious instruction. That is scored on a different type of scale, and that scale goes from low response, not applicable, all the way up to most implementation. So you can see we have most implementation and ambitious instruction and involved families, and that we have more implementation in collaborative teachers and supportive environment, and that we have average implementation for effective leaders. We have increased in four of those five areas. So we've increased in involved families, we've increased in supportive environment, we've increased in collaborative teachers and in effective, and in effective leaders. We did have a drop in ambitious instruction. Ambitious instruction is reported by students, and remembering that the previous year it was reported by sixth or eighth grade students, and this year, fourth and fifth grade students were added in. And when looking at comparing the scores, a lot of the middle school students still, their ambitious instruction scores increased. It was at the elementary level where some of the scores were lower. And so we'll look into those responses and see how we can increase what we're doing with students and helping them see the work that the staff members are doing in the class. Involved families is a parent-reported component. Supportive environment is a student-reported component. Collaborative teachers and effective leaders are teacher-reported components. Five Essentials delivers a report that tells you, these are the areas you're doing well in, and these are your areas for opportunities. Before I talk about our strengths and our opportunities, I think it would be good to explain a little bit about Five Essentials scoring. So the survey, for those who aren't familiar, Five Essentials will give you a statement, and they ask you to score it as strongly agree to strongly disagree. And the way Five Essentials works is that they weight those statements differently. And there's no explanation on how, which ones are weighted which way, but there's a wonderful, very detailed mathematical expression for how they weigh it. That actually is way above my head. But they take it and they weigh each statement differently. The other thing they weigh is the strongly agree weighs heavier than just agree, and strongly disagree weighs heavier than disagree. So if you have a high favorable response, a combination of strongly and agree, you may still show a lower score because your agrees may have been higher, a higher percentage of agrees than your percentage of strongly agrees. And that's what we found out with our opportunities. So I'm going to actually start, start with our opportunities. When you look at opportunities, we have opportunities for growth in school commitment, teacher influence, instructional leadership, and teacher principal trust. And the statements that come with those include things like, when I look at school commitment, it includes things like, I feel it's a teacher-reported category, and includes things like, I feel loyal to the school, I would recommend the school to parents seeking a place for their child, I usually look forward to each working day at this school. Five Essentials says that this is an opportunity for us, but those three statements I named have 97% favorable responses. The thing that came up is that most of those favorable responses were agree versus strongly agree. So it ended up with a lower Five Essential score. In teacher principal trust, responses from teachers were given towards the principal has confidence in the expertise of the teachers, principal places the needs of children ahead of personal and political interests, and the principal takes personal interest in professional development of teachers. Those three statements, there's a few more, those three statements were in the 90, 90 percents. The other statements are in the upper 80 percents, but again, it's the imbalance of strongly agrees and agrees. Our strengths, however, were quality of student discussion. So items such as teachers reporting that students build on each other's ideas during discussions, students use data and text references to support their ideas, students show each other respect when discussing. Teacher and parent trust, teachers feel respected by parents of the students, parents support teachers' teaching efforts, parents do their best to help their children learn, staff at the school work hard to build trust and relationship with parents. Math instruction, English instruction, and student-teacher trust were all student-reported levels, which is great to see that our students have strong favorable responses to what's happening in their classrooms. So how does this all play out in our state report card? The state assigns four ratings to schools, and they assign them as exemplary, commendable, underperforming, or lowest performing. And what happens is there are a number of components that are looked at, and I'll talk about those in a second. And these components have different weights, and they're given index scores, and then the index scores are added up, and schools get a total score. The state then takes every school at the K8 level and every school at the high school level, and they list them all out from highest to lowest score. They draw a line at the top 10% of those schools, and those schools are exemplary as long as none of their student groups, and that goes back to those subgroups, are performing at the level of the lowest performing schools. So you can be at the top and have a subgroup that is, is performing compared at the same rate as a lowest performing school, and even though your overall school performance is in the top, that subgroup will then mark you as underperforming. Your whole school designation will be underperforming. Lowest performing is the lowest 5%. They draw a line there, that's the lowest performing. Underperforming are schools that have one or more student groups are performing at the level of that 5%. Everybody else is commendable. So we have here the pieces, the components that play a role in the school designation. 50% of a school's designation is on growth. The state places a heavy emphasis on growth. We want to see our students growing. 25% for ELA, 25% for math. Proficiency is 15%, seven and a half for math, seven and a half for ELA, and then science is 5%. Chronic absenteeism is 20% of the designation, which is why we have to watch our attendance rates because it is a huge portion of our designation. And climate survey participation is 5% of our score. English learner progress to proficiency is 5% if you have a subgroup of English learner, enough emergent bilingual students. We do not, so what happens is that 5% is spread out among the other designations. So our school report card designations for this year, we have three schools that are rated exemplary, two schools are rated commendable. It is important to note that the difference between our lowest exemplary score and our highest commendable score is very minimal. So our, and our two commendable schools are separated by a very minimal number of points as well. So our commendable schools are as high as our exemplary schools, they just miss that line that cuts off the 10% in the state. We have five very high-performing schools, five very hard-working school leaders, working with hard-working staff members, who have produced great results over the course of this past year. And I'm excited to have joined this district and to continue working towards that growth. In numbers, the growth percentage, so remember 50% of the school designation is on growth, 25 for math, 25 for ELA. So here are the percentages by school and district for our growth. As you can see with the math data, as you can see with the IAR data, our math, our ELA is stronger than our math right now, so we're going to continue to work, while working on ELA and continuing to grow in that area, we are going to continue to look at math and work on our growth there. And then here's our proficiency for math, ELA, and science. Again, our math proficiency being lower than our other areas of ELA and science. So when we look at the whole picture, we look at MTSS, we look at math, we look at IAR, we look at all of our data, the strengths that we're seeing are that we have continued growth across the system in English Language Arts. We continue to support our students' growth and achievement through our MTSS structures, and we have improved in four out of five of our domains of Five Essentials. We have opportunities in identifying the opportunities in our math instruction assessment. We see that there are some areas to address in math. We need to dig deeper and look at what specific areas those are, not just in vertical alignment, but also horizontal alignment in what we're teaching in our curriculum. We want to continue to increase the percentage of students who are meeting their math growth percentiles. While we are above that 50 to 60% of high-performing districts, it is important that we continue to grow. And we wanted to continue to increase the percentage of students who meet or exceed expectations on IAR. And we're also going to focus on continuing, we're going to continue to focus on instructional leadership and our district collaborative structures. So our next steps, we're going to analyze as leaders and as staff members, analyze our assessment data, map, as well as our common assessments that we're using in our day-to-day instruction for specific goal areas of focus across our grade levels. We're going to provide the collaborative structures to increase student achievement, and we've been doing that already with the 75-minute PDs that we have established from the contract negotiations, working to look at how we're analyzing student work across grade levels. And then in upcoming 75-minute PDs, we're going to be working on horizontal, well, we have been working on horizontal alignment of instruction, what we're doing at grade levels across the schools. And then in coming up 75-minute PDs, we're going to work on our vertical alignment of instruction, having grade levels pair with grades above and grades below to have conversations on what we're teaching, what we might need to move around so that students are prepared for the grades that they're going to. So with that, thank you, and now questions.
Any questions for Angela?
The presentation's very good. Very clear. And also, I was very pleased to see that the, the results overall are very good. Especially, I want to just congratulate Hollywood and Blithe especially for really fantastic results this year. Really, very, very strong results in those, both those schools, which is great. Just a couple of questions on, one of them is this absenteeism rate, you said 9%. That's actually, I was quite shocked by that, actually, that figure. Because you're saying it's 9% of our students are chronically, missed more than 10% of the school year.
Yes. The state reported that 9% of our students missed more than 10% of the days they were enrolled in the district. And that's any type of absence. So that could be vacations, that can be illnesses, that can be like mental health days that parents might keep kids home for, or my child was tired, and so we didn't think they were doing anything today, so we kept him home. Any type of absence, excused or unexcused, is counted towards the state's reporting.
Okay. I was surprised to see that. The other thing is, you said the percentage of low income went up from 15% to 22%, which is a 50% increase in one year. Is that, do you know if that, did the state change their, like?
No, our population is changing. So we've noticed at a couple of schools that the low-income rate is increasing in their schools, and it's, it is increasing than overall as a district. I will say that right now. I calculated the numbers for where we were at last week, and we were at 20%, so a slight decrease, but still higher than last year.
Okay. And then a question about the NWA numbers, the projections, how are the projected growth numbers arrived at? Are they just the average of the schools that are in the NWA, or are they some kind of?
So NWA looks at, they have a norms report that they put out every, I think about four or five years. And what they look at is, they have calculations for looking at how students did, so they take a score, 215. And they look at all the students who got 215 and how they scored in the same amount of time at the same grade level. And then they have a calculation for projecting growth for any student at fifth grade who has a 215 on their fall, where they should be for winter, and where they should be for spring.
So do they just take the average, it's like a conditional average, you take the average of all students that have had 250 initially and what they're, what they're actually, so just the average basically, conditional on this initial score? Okay. Okay. Yeah. And, okay. The other question I had was, have you looked at the, the growth, there's, like, you have the growth you talked about in the state assessment, the measure of growth in the state assessment for each subject in each grade, and then you also have the same thing in the, in the NWA data? Have you looked at the correlation between, like, for the growth in, in those, those two different measures of growth, the state assessment versus the map by subject and by grade? I mean, how strongly correlated those two measures are?
I have not explored how strongly they're correlated, but definitely would be interested in exploring that. I will, I'm interested in looking at that, yeah.
See if it's like the test format that's an issue, or if it's just, or if they're the same. That's a good question.
Thank you.
I just had a general question. You know how it always tells you where the state numbers are? When you, are they, are they generally in the meet, the meet expectations category, or do they ever fall in the, you know how?
So like the state average score?
Their scale score, right.
I don't know, let me go back and check.
Like if they're 733 and 7.
No, I think they're, they're both, both of them are in the approached.
Yeah, we were in the, in the.
For the state 2019.
Yeah, I was just going to say, do they tend to fall in the approach?
Scaled scores both fall in the approach, approaching.
Just going to say that generally true, that's interesting.
I don't have a question, I just want to say, again, what a fantastic job. I'm very lucky to live in this district, and our kids are all really, you know, we're grateful for our leaders, and I think, like you had said, the commendable and the exemplary, there's such a fine line there. I think the schools are all, I think we need to reiterate how high achieving and how, how good our schools are doing, while there's always opportunity for growth, and you guys will always be achieving, working towards that. I just want to say thank you, and yeah, great job.
Thank you very much. I just had a general question, and I understand it sounds like a very fine line between the exemplary and commendable, that it was hard not to notice the two that are commendable are the two largest elementary schools, while Hauser is exemplary. I guess I'm just wondering, is there, is that potentially a function of the size, or do we have any kind of idea on, on the differences there?
I don't necessarily think it's a function of size. I think that that was, you know, I know that was a conversation also last year as well, and so, and we're in a slightly different situation than we were last year, so I can't really necessarily attribute it to size. I think that because growth plays such a huge percentage in the designation, when you look at the growth that happened at Hollywood and Blithe, I think that that helps to play a role in their designation.
It sure seems like, I know, like, the last two years, we had always thought, we have been talking about the smaller schools and making sure they were getting the same supports and the horizontal align, you know, talking to other teachers, the collaboration. It seems like from this data, maybe some of those techniques and decisions paid off because the growth at those schools seemed, you know.
Yeah, that was a follow-up, because, yeah, it seemed like, no, 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 you got to it, so, yeah.
Tacking on to that, you know, that is a conversation that we do have as a leadership team. Now that we have those supports in, in those schools, is there something that we need to be doing to help out the other two schools as well?
Exactly, and that's exactly what I was going to say. It's interesting to, to, that we were reflecting on that, and now there's a whole nother component reflecting the other way, like, but.
No, it's that's fourth and fifth grader, something 5%. No, I'm just kidding. But I know you were talking about the coaching too that was going on in the smaller schools, having an impact on math instruction especially, so.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
I'm happy to see that that's helping. Seemingly, I mean, I don't want to put it all to that, but, you know, our other giant schools, though, to manage 400 students is extremely difficult.
It is very tough.
And the families that go with them, so I do commend those, those large school principals. It's not an easy job.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, this was fantastic.
All right.
Remember your 19-minute?
All right. Dr. Miller.
Moving on to, so I think there's a couple items here. One is transferring the funds from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. Mr., maybe Mr. Fitten can explain what he's proposing there.
We have a resolution in the, in the board book to transfer $2 million from O&M to Capital. to capital, so we can kind of segregate everything we're spending on capital projects, and the bills are starting to come in. I'm working on updating our five-year projections, so I'll have a more comprehensive plan to look through next month. If there's any questions on the resolution, it's, it's really just better accounting practice to put it all in the capital projects fund.
What questions?
Is that an action item at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And then if there are no questions on the transfer, then the next item is the first draft of the 2019 levy. So, Mr. Fitten, you want to talk about that a little bit, or do you have anything to say about that, or?
So I submitted the initial estimate in your board book for the tax year 2019 tax levy. I'll just show you a couple of things. So the big question is, where does the money come from that we spend every year? And most of it comes from the property taxes, so about 86% of our budget this year, the revenue comes from property taxes. So the purpose of the levy and extension process is, is a way to convert the tax base in the district into revenue that the school district can spend. There's kind of two pieces to this. Let's see, the levy, what we're putting together now is our request for tax revenue, and then what comes back from the county clerk will be a little bit adjusted, and that's what's approved, and then that goes into the bills. And there's a tax cap law which limits how much more we can ask for compared to the previous year, basically to the rate of inflation. And this is the history of the last 10 years of what the inflation's been. You can see, 2017 and 2018, it was 2.1%, and 2019's 2.2, and I have to check the data behind there.
2017 is to be 1.2.
I'm sorry, 1.9, I typed 2.2, and that's why it's lower.
It's slight, but it's holding.
It'd be better if it was all linked together, but it's not, so I'll fix that.
So 1.9?
1.9 is what we used for the levy. This is kind of the summary of the certificate, and you can see the lower number there, bottom right, 26,282. That's, at this point, what we're estimating would turn in for the levy. We don't need to have a final number until December 4th, or December 20th. Is that, what's the board meeting in December?
May I ask the board meeting?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, 14th.
Yeah. Is that what, I know you had just said this, but I'm just, that's when we approve the levy?
Right, so I'll, I'll keep updating it.
Right.
And so you'll see at the next three meetings, and if there's any suggestions, we can change it before, and we'll have a hearing on, on the 18th.
Okay.
And a vote to approve it. And then it needs to be, here's the timetable. So we got the CPI in January, this is the beginning of the tax levy, and by December 18th, we'll approve it, and then we'll file it with the county clerk. It has to be filed by the last Tuesday in December. And nowadays, we can file it online, so you don't have to drive down there. Any questions on the tax levy?
Can you just give it a similar rate?
As prior years?
Sorry?
Do you anticipate the percentage to be similar that we're requesting?
Yeah, I think, we always ask for a little more, and then they.
Yes, and then they adjust.
Back down, so it, simply, it's really just inflation.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all for the, for the next.
Nice, you made some time.
Yeah.
Well, I'll work and shave it even more off.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring up policy, on the policy meeting, I know the IAS meeting in a couple of weeks to go at a number of items that have come up. And one of the items that we've got, I know we've gotten some emails on, some feedback on, is regarding the issue of arming teachers in their classrooms. And so I just wanted to get a pulse on what the board thinks about this, and do we want to send, I guess, then a delegate down there to vote for or against this?
I feel the same way that I did last year, I don't think it's necessary. I've never heard any staff member, principal ask for such things. Yeah, I think we want to continue the.
Like, as in, look at local control, you know, individual school district. So it's not written as like.
It's not written as, here we go.
But I, I would agree with the last time, we should send a delegate, that's my opinion.
Similar to what we did before.
Yeah, I agree, I don't have that, my opinion has not changed since last year.
I didn't have an opinion last year, but I wasn't a favor of it then.
Yeah, my opinion hasn't changed since last year. The resolution was voted down last year, my understanding, by quite a large margin. And as I thought, as I expressed last year, it seems to be such a waste of time, even if this resolution were to somehow pass, the idea of such a law passing in Illinois seems very remote. It just seems like a waste of time on everyone's part to revisit it so soon after it being voted down again last year. In terms of sending a representative down, I don't know if we could keep you from going there, Dave. Pretty sure you'd like to attend.
Is that, is that true?
Well, I don't know, like, like would, I don't know if you use that adjective, but.
Are you willing to?
I'm willing to.
Okay, great.
Well, then I think we should send you.
Okay.
To, it seems like we have six, six all same.
I think it's similar to last year, everybody's.
Thank you for bringing this up publicly, because I didn't know that. I've seen questions, even just every, you know, I've seen from communities all across the state, talking about it on social media, so it's, it's good that we're.
And, 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 Dan, you are right, it did pass by, I mean, it didn't pass by a large margin, but it wasn't as large as we would think. I forgot what the exact vote count was, but it wasn't as large as a lot of people thought it was going to be.
So everybody's thought it might be important here, so we should definitely. All right, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
I saved up about two minutes there.
All right, good. Next is first almiti.
Until 8:25, yeah, well, I'm not going to make that. So Joel and I met with Martha and Jim this morning, actually, just to start putting some agenda items together for future committee of the whole meeting. A couple of things that we have on there currently are just the, a lot of things that we've talked about at a couple of previous meetings, and just never really have acted on a lot of it, so the sick, sick days holiday, I don't know, I think it's like 5:30, whatever, kind of shoring some of that up and bringing some recommendations to the group, with early learners moving over to Ames, with the construction project, trying to, you know, kickstart some conversation around what will additional support look like or be needed potentially there, the permanent sub idea that we, I think, kicked around just maybe a month ago or something like that, looking at some of the stipend conversations that we've been having, things like that, so nothing, maybe something at the next month's meeting around a few of these easier items, and then more to come on a few of the more difficult ones.
Great.
All right. Thanks for that report. All right, so our future meeting dates are November 20th, is a regular business meeting at 7:00 PM at Hauser Learning Resource Center. Board will enter into closed session at 6:30 PM if necessary. December 2nd is a special meeting at 6:00 PM to 9:00 at Hauser as well. December 4th is committee of the whole, 7:00 PM at Ames. December 18th is a regular business meeting, 7:00 PM at Hauser. Board will enter into closed session at 6:30. And I think we were discussing the possibility of returning back to closed session to finish our discussion. So is there a motion to enter into closed session for the purpose, and I should specify, this is closed session, not for action afterwards. So is there a motion to enter into closed session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiating?
You just have to read the bottom one.
The bottom one, okay. The purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired.
Second.
Margie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Barzadi?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhoff?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion carried.